Good evening, everyone. Welcome to our October 7th Select Board meeting. A few changes tonight, and Mr. D. is right here on time. Thank you, sir. We're just starting without you. The Chair, Maureen, is not with us tonight. Her daughter's in labor, and Maureen is with her. So we wish the family good luck. D., don't -- oh, you sat down. I was going to say, can you lead us in the pledge?
Sounds good.
All right.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Given that Maureen is not here, when we get to items number seven and 10, I'll ask for a motion to table. And with that, can I have approval of the minutes of September 23rd?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And also a motion for the minutes of September 25.
So moved. Oh, no, I wasn't here. I can't move that.
I'll move. So moved. So moved.
Thank you, Gardner. Is there a second?
Second.
And all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstain?
Abstain.
Thank you very much. At this time, new public business. Is there anyone with any new public business? Mr. Saluto, please go to the microphone, introduce yourself to the folks at home.
Good evening. The subject is the restoration of Swamp Walk. I'm George Saluto, and Swamp Walk is currently unavailable for public use. I'm here tonight to ask your approval to restore and reopen this highly-used and extraordinary public recreational venue. Swamp Walk is located at the northern end of the Danvers Rail Trail. It's about a third of a mile long, and is an elevated walkway through a swamp. It's a nature trail with amazing vistas, beaver dams and lodges, observation platforms, picnic spots, and sweet flowering bushes you can only see and smell in a swamp. I was surprised recently to learn that it's utilized by a hands-on -- as a hands-on teaching site by the Natural and Environmental Sciences Structure for Students at the Essex Northshore Agricultural and Technical School. Swamp Walk was built by 200 volunteers and about $40,000 in donations during a few weekends in the spring and fall about 15 years ago. No taxpayer funds were used. It now has a few walkway plants, planks, that are missing or broken. There is a small section that needs additional bracing. The entire walkway is still in sound shape. It simply needs renewed attention to be reopened for the safe use by folks in our community. We have a plan for restoration. Our funding goal is only 15,000. That's for materials, landscaping, and maintenance. Volunteers have already raised their hands to help with the restoration, as well as requests as to where to send donations. Additionally, a social media vehicle is ready for launch, which provides a destination for donations and a person to contact in order to volunteer, namely me. Fundraising will begin immediately and continue through this fall and winter. Restoring will start and end in early spring. The restoration project will be managed by the original Swamp Walk lead person of 15 years ago. He's the regional property manager of the Ipswich River Wildlife Sanctuary in Topsfield. He designed and built the extensive elevated walkway through their sanctuary right of this century. It's at least a quarter-century old, as well as similar projects elsewhere in New England. He and I will be responsible for the successful restoration of our community's Swamp Walk, including enthusiastic volunteers and full funding, and without taxpayer dollars. May I have your approval to launch?
George, fundraising, where is that, where the fund's going?
They're going to Town Hall. There is a special account set up labeled Swamp Walk, and it is part of the Rail Trail Committee's fund. So it's already set up. It simply needs to be publicly announced.
Madam Manager, do we need to vote to accept those funds as they come, after they come in?
Yes, when they come in, you'll have to accept their donations. I'm working with Aaron and Rodney to get everything in place so he can watch.
Wonderful, thank you.
Yeah.
For clarity, is it a town account or a Friends of account?
I believe it's, I believe it sits here with us.
It's a town account.
Yeah, but I will confirm that.
It's really an attachment to an existing town account.
Yeah.
Sort of a subset of the Rail Trail account.
Okay.
Any other questions for board members?
Nope. Well, I guess I do, a functional one. To the extent that collecting the money, obviously, we talk about. But do we have to give any permission to be on the -- it's public land, isn't it? Or is it Danvers-managed public land?
Danvers-managed public land. So I don't think it's a vote by the board.
Okay.
We just need to give them the okay on, from the town side.
That was the process that was utilized last time. And by the way, Swamp Walk in the top end of the so-called Danvers Rail Trail is actually in Winham. So I'm going before the Winham Board, mostly as a courtesy, to say that hopefully Danvers has approved, and that I'd appreciate your approval to launch. And it's really to request of both towns permission to go ahead and do this.
George, this is not an agenda item, so we cannot take a vote at this particular meeting. We can have it on the agenda next meeting for a vote of the Select Board unless there's somebody that would object.
I would not object to voting on this this evening.
It's not, it's not on the agenda.
I know. Unless it flies in the face of an open meeting, I have no problem with this.
We can take a vote the next time. I just want to know if anybody objects to it. No.
No objection, Mr. Chairman, but it didn't sound like we needed a vote. It sounded more like the town manager had the authority to give him the okay to proceed, and once everything is done and we get the funds, then we will vote to accept the funds. So if there's no objection--
I think what George is asking is for our support, which verbally--
Yes. It isn't like there is a, today we start and tomorrow we end collecting funds. The funds are going to keep coming in. Volunteers are going to keep -- this is a happening. This is a community happening. We're not sort of, we're not building the Mystic River Bridge here.
So-- I think D. is right. As far as the accounting purposes, that can happen. A vote of, a voice, a vote of support by this board, we don't have the authority to say, yes or no, you can't do this, I believe. So I don't think we have to say, yes, you can do this. I think it would be beneficial when he goes to Winham, and when you go, let me know. I'll go again with you, to say, Danvers is, the Select Board of Danvers and the town administration is supportive of us restoring this nature walk.
That's a fair statement to make.
So whether you want that to be, do we vote, a straw vote, or just say, yes, we all agree, I'm fine, however you want it?
If we all agree, that's fine, but I'm not going to call for a vote or something that's not on the agenda.
Okay.
Okay? But you can all express your wishes.
And I express that I'm in support of him carrying that message to whomever he needs it.
I think it's a simple, I think it's a simple yes. Mike?
I support it, too.
Thank you.
I'll support it as well.
We support it. George, you know I was there the first day. I might be there the last day.
And you and another fellow were the first two people to walk down what was called the Rail Trail later, because there were still railroad tracks there. And it was necessary to clear some of the limbs of the tree covering the railroad tracks. And when we started this product, project, in order to deliver a third of a mile down the site, we had a little flatbed dolly with railroad wheels on it that we pushed the lumber down. This was long before the Rail Trail. The last time we went through this process, it was elegant and easy. The board simply said, sure, you're not using tax money, taxpayer money, go ahead and do it. So we did it. I thought we were asking for the same process once again.
We're all in agreement that you should do it?
Yep.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
I'll go do it.
Do it.
Thank you.
Thank you, George. Bill Bradstreet.
Bill Bradstreet, Town Meeting Member, Precinct One. He's did a nice presentation. I probably will do a presentation. I always asked that you tell me you're working on it. And what comes to mind to me after listening to George was, in the past, I had asked for proper signage to be placed in town honoring the indigenous people who were stewards of the property that we now occupy. I think they deserve recognition, too. I know I asked, are you working on it? Are you still working on it?
Well, I think the town moderator, moderator agreed to read something at each town meeting. I don't think we discussed a sign as such.
If I, I think I asked for a sign, my memory.
You may have.
I'm older than you. My memory is that I asked for some signage placed someplace conspicuously so people, when they come to our nice town to see what we have to offer, will see that we were nice enough to honor the people who were here before we came along.
And, Manager, can we, we can't just pick a spot to say, let's put a sign up. We kind of need to do a little study.
Yeah, you have to figure out where.
Yeah.
Can I suggest it's probably a combination of the Human Rights and Inclusion Committee and the Historical Society, the Historical Group, that would come up with the wording, the location, presentation, make a, make a--
Yeah, the Historic Society already has a declaration, a statement.
Yes, it was right at the town meeting.
Right. They changed that a little bit, the human rights--
If we're going to formalize it with a sign, I would think those two committees would want to get together.
They should.
So my point is, you're working on it.
Will you come to our next Historical Society Board meeting and speak to it?
I will try my best.
5:30 on the 25th, Tapley Hall. If you tell me you're going, I'll ask Mr. George to put you on the agenda.
Okay, and I'll say, I'll say yes now. It's important to me. I think the--
No, I think the Historic Society will support it, but you can't just ask one person. We've got to ask the whole trust, Board of Trustees.
We'll all work on it, then.
You want to check, do you want to check in with me later on that?
Yes, I have to ask my boss.
I know. Thank you. Thank you. Mark?
Thank you, Mr. Bennett. I have a shorter memory than Bill, but what I want to do is remind the board about the petition that was placed before you last meeting in regard to the Planning Board actions and master plan consideration. And I am just wondering, I have not heard anything from the Planning Board or from the town manager, and I am very concerned that I hope it doesn't just get into the round waistband.
No, it's still on the top of my chair where I keep important documents. I reviewed it earlier today. We'll ask the Chair if she wants to put something on the agenda with the manager for discussion prior to the next special town meeting.
Mr. Chairman, I've got it right here. If I might, this is the action of the Planning Committee. They, they go through this process. I'm, please wait. They go through the process. They'll certainly invite Mr. Zubrick to come and speak to his, his concerns and thoughts and considerations. But the process is to work through them for their recommendation to us. So asking for us to take action, I think, is not the appropriate step in this point. I think it's to ask, we may ask the Planning Board to take it up, but we're not going to be active participants until they come to us with their full research thoughts and revisions.
Okay, Mark?
And I totally agree with your statement, Gardner, and the thing is, I just didn't want this thing to disappear and not to be heard again like a lot of items do happen. Thank you.
Thank you. Tony? No, you all sat?
All sat.
Okay, okay, thanks. Anyone else, new public business? All right, thank you. Number three, the board will vote to accept gifts to the town in accordance with Mass. General Laws, Chapter 44, Section 53A, versus a mass government info system association. This manager, somebody to speak to this?
I, Colby Cousins, IT Department.
Hello, Colby. Thank you for your help today, for your staff to get my emails up and running again.
Oh, excellent. You're welcome. So what, what you have before you in your packets today is a donation to the IT department of a little over $12,000 from the Massachusetts Government Information Systems Association. So that association was a regional IT organization for a number of years, many years, and they have recently dissolved. They had some leftover funds, and they were looking for someone doing something that supports their mission of regional IT work. So they saw our work with the Northshore IT Collaborative, which we founded in Danvers, now has eight member communities. We work on cybersecurity. We have a regional data center. We have a regional fiber optic network. And they thought that Danvers would be a good location to deliver their funds and continue that mission that it was intended for.
Thank you. Questions, D.?
Oh, no questions. Thank you.
Mike?
Thank you. Were the, were we the only town that got this monies?
Yes, we were.
Very nice. Is this going to help me pay my electric bill online? Still can't get on. Thank you.
I have no questions. Very good.
Is there a motion?
I move we accept the gift as presented, and to the extent that there's a organization, send a note of thanks.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, none. Thank you. Thank you, Colby.
Thank you.
Next, memorial bench at Endicott Park.
I, if I may, Mr. Chair, I told Chris he didn't need to be here because this is one that you're used to doing. These are included in your packet as a memo from Chris Samor, Director of Natural Resources, asking you to request the acceptance of a donation in the amount of $3,800 to fund the installation of two memorial benches at Endicott Park. These benches will be dedicated in memory of Jim and Florence Mullin, Tony and Edith Navarro, and Ron and Mim Bolduc? Sorry if I didn't get the names correct.
That's correct.
And your packet goes on to tell a bit about their deep roots in Danvers and their ties to Endicott Park, and we hope you'll accept the donation.
All right, good. Questions, Gardner?
No questions.
Mike?
No questions.
D.
No questions.
What's the will of the board?
Although it's bundled as one, I move we accept the, the donations and send individual letters of thanks.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, none. Thank you. Thank you very much. That's great. Board, can I ask your indulgence to take number six out of order? We hear from the application on Northshore before we get into our other updates?
Yes, please. Fine.
Fine, fine, fine. We'll go to number six, the board in receipt of an application by Essex Northshore Agricultural Technical School, 565 Maple Street, Alumni Hall, Jill Sawyer, event coordinator, for one-day wine and malt license for Musical Bingo Friday, October 17th at 7:00 to 10:00. You must be Jill.
Good evening. Yes, I am.
Good evening.
Here with Ryan Monks as well, representing Essex Tech.
How are you? Good, welcome. Tell us a little bit about your Musical Bingo event.
Yes, so Musical Bingo is a fundraising event for our DECA co-curricular club. It is going to be Friday, October 17th. It is a Delt 21-plus-only event, and we're really just trying to be creative in our fundraising efforts because we have three co-curricular clubs that tend to be very expensive as far as competitions, through state competitions, national, traveling, so we're seeking a one-day liquor license for this event.
Questions, Gardner?
No, I have no questions. Thank you. Oh, I'm sorry, one. And to the clerk through you, Mr. Chair, how many one-day liquor licenses have they, has the school used this year, in 2025? And if you don't have the answer, I don't need to tonight. I'm just curious.
Less than 30.
Oh, is 30 the limit?
30, I believe, is the limit per year.
Oh, then never mind. Okay, I thought it was something much smaller.
Hold on. This is the second one-day liquor license for 2025 from the town.
Oh, we did one in the special meeting two weeks ago.
We did, yes, exactly.
Oh, that was only the second. Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Michael?
No, no questions at this time. Thank you.
D.
No questions. Thank you.
I have none either, and this is not a public hearing, so what's the will of the board?
Mr. Chairman, a move we accept the application as presented?
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Good luck.
Thank you.
So I assume for the other two groups, you'll be back again?
No, so we have other, we are trying to kind of streamline any other one-day liquor license we would need so that we can kind of come together to one meeting and kind of list out those activities, but we do not anticipate another fundraiser that would involve a liquor license at this time.
Good idea. Thank you. Good idea. Thank you. Good luck. Okay, the board will hear a CASPER update from fire, police, and public health. All right.
Good evening. Jamie Schaffner, Deputy Fire Chief. Chief Barry couldn't be here tonight, so thanks for having me.
You're welcome.
We're here to present our focus area of the town's CASPER plan. So in looking at future potential climate-related challenges to the town and how we could prepare public safety, we focused on two key areas. Our first area is, is really about making sure that our public safety systems remain operational during climate-related emergencies, or any emergencies for that matter, and making sure that our communication systems are redundant and resilient are incredibly important for that. So we've broken it down into some short-term goals and some long-term goals. Our short terms period of less than three years and our long term is three to 10. So what we're kind of looking at is making sure that when a widespread event happens that we still have communication systems to operate our, all of our first responder systems, including and communicate with multiple agencies and be able to coordinate response to any issues that are going on in the region. So our short-term goals are to map our communication nodes, make sure that our, obviously, we know our dispatch centers, but our entire system is GIS mapped and make sure it's up to date with who owns what and how the roles they play in that system. So we're working on that now. Installing battery backup systems into our dispatch centers, our communication nodes, our repeaters. We already have, most of those things are generator backups, especially their dispatch center, but we're ensuring that in that lull between losing power and a generator kicking on, that everything's battery backed up, so communication is flawless, our systems never go down, and that everything runs smoothly. We're also focusing on our repeater system and our, working with cellphone vendors. So a big part of major events that happen and it's kind of made famous of local events like the Boston bombing and the marathon, is that everyone starts using their cellphones. The network gets swamped, goes down, no one can make phone calls. So we want to make sure the communication is still possible with that. And one solution is signing MOUs, work with telecom providers and have partnership agreements that they can bring on what's known as COWs, the Cellular on Wheels, so they can actually bring in repeater towers. A lot of communities do this for pre-planned events. If you drive around Salem, you might see them now to make sure that cellphone network is given additional power to make sure that they can handle the volume of calls. But, so if we have a widespread event here, not only is infrastructure likely damaged, but there'll be more usage of people needing help, and we've seen that in national level events. So kind of planning ahead and having those agreements in place on who we can call, contacts, making sure their deployment method and timelines are, are laid out. So we're already chipping away, working on that. And our last short-term goal is to, we have pretty strong mutual aid agreements and protocols, but to enhance that and grow that beyond the region and for larger scope events, weather-related events, and things like wildfires kind of came into play last summer, as everybody knows, and we've been building off of those. Actually, you can go back one. He jumped ahead of me. No worries. Uh, our long-term goals too is building a redundant fiber wireless network, which Colby has been working very hard on doing. We've been in touch with him, making sure that it's multi-directional so that, much like a water line, if a water main breaks, things can flow around it. It's not a one unidirectional communication. So obviously, if we have a widespread infrastructure problem, that communication can still get where it needs to go. We're also ensuring that we have 48 to 72 hours of backup at all of our nodes, so not just the ones we own, but the ones that we use and lease through other companies and vendors, ensuring that they're keeping up with our standards of backup power supplies. Also exploring the options of renewable energy and solar and things like that to store energy, store electricity for when there is outages and downs. That's going to be a long-term goal that we're working on. And really taking a look at our secondary dispatch and emergency operations centers. So we have our primary communication center, but of course, we plan for if there's an issue in that, in that area, that that building cannot be used, that we have other operation centers that will be functional to the full capacity that we need. We have a lot of those things set up, but with technology growing so rapidly in the past few years, we want to make sure that our, our backup capabilities are keeping up with that growth. And of course, with that comes funding and technology and equipment. So that'll take some time, but we're working on it. And public alert systems, in the same theme of technology increasing rapidly, you know, the old radio alert system, there's a lot more out there now, and we're going to make sure, we're actually working on, we work with MEMA a lot, Massachusetts Emergency Management Agency, to see their capabilities of notifying the public of an event, and we're working with IT to explore vendors that we could do that here within town and not have to go through other people's protocols to get information out. And of course, making sure it's accessible to everyone, meaning it's multilingual, and everyone can get the messages they need to get. Uh, our second area of focus is training, so making sure that our responders are trained and educated on potential issues. And again, our short-term and long-term goals, short-term zero to three is make sure hazard-specific training modules, we're already into this. Everyone knows last summer, the, the widespread brush fires across the state was a pretty unprecedented response, and we identified, hey, we really need to be training on this more. But we're going to build on that into floods, heat, cold emergencies, and, and just long-term power outages. What are the implications of, you know, not just a couple hours of long, of power, but maybe even multiple days out? With that comes with semi-annual full-scale drills, including communications failure, working with other agencies within town and around, and staying on top and including annual climate hazard briefings. MEMA does a pretty good job at doing this for us already, but kind of growing that in the bigger scale and including NOAA and educating all of our frontline personnel on what that means, and staying on top of those mutual aid protocols. We've, you know, again, back to the brush fire things, they've already revised a lot of mutual aid protocols and strike teams and task forces, kind of statewide efforts at responding to, and with MEMA preparing for these types of events and keep growing that out into other climate-related emergencies. So the long-term goals come as bi-annual refreshers, making sure that we're on top of that, specialized response units. We're actually working right now with NARAC, which is a local homeland security council, to outfit. They own a truck that is stored in our fire headquarters, and we're kind of working with them to make that a specialized wildfire response unit for a local regional response. But we can work with other departments and other towns and cities to build more of those specialized response teams, kind of that regional capability for unusual events. And we're going to keep forming more partnerships with volunteer organizations, the Red Cross in particular. We're actually, we created a shelter for the long-term power outage in the Wright Street region, Wright Street area not too long ago, which opened up an opportunity. The Red Cross saw kind of our facilities and how we plan to set up shelters, and they were impressed and have approached us about forming a more permanent partnership, which is great for the town and relationships, and we're going to keep building off of those things. And of course, with anything, after any response or any incident, we all get together as department heads, responders, do massive after-action reports, gather all the data and come back and see how we can learn to do this better. So how do we measure these things? Our metrics are, for our first action is 90% of our communication sites with 48-hour backups by 2027, which is a realistic goal. And we're going to make sure we have less than two hours of downtime during events. For training, we're just going to make sure that 100% of our personnel are trained annually, and that we have at least two multi-agency drills per year, make sure we're including our IT, our DPW, of course, police, fire, public health, and any other partners in who we could be working with, and make sure that we're consistently, less than 30-minute deployment for all climate incidents, whether locally or regionally. On that, pass it off to Frank. Any questions on the public safety before I move on to public health?
All set, everybody? Thank you, Jamie.
All right, thank you.
Good evening, everyone. Frank Giacalone, I'm Director of Public Health for the town of Danvers, here to present our public health part of the CASPER plan. And our first action is to pilot a neighborhood resilience hub that provides daily needed resources and emergency response services to enhance community resilience. So our hub that we developed is actually online, and it's on our public health webpage. And the purpose of this is to get much-needed resources out to the residents of Danvers for those matters listed there on the right that I'll go down. Oftentimes, these services are hard to, hard to find. So we had an intern actually that reached out to each section here, and the, the hub itself, the website, has listed contact information, hospitals, urgent care, mental health resources, so places that you can actually go, call. And the website itself has a lot of toolkits, how to prepare for climate change events, and even general preparedness, what you should be, what you should have in your home, what you need during these events. So it's a very useful, useful site. And the areas that we have concentrated on, so we have mental health resources, medical resources as well, housing resources, people get displaced, people who need help with hoarding issues. And oftentimes, housing actually can be very challenging, especially for people who don't have, can't get to senior care. So you have that younger population, and what do you do with them? So there's actually places out there that we have listed that can help, rental assistance, and housing assistance too, if you get displaced from your home. We have food resources and storage information, so we have our food pantries there and where people can get needed food. And evacuation transportation resources as well, people who need to, transportation to get to where, where they're going. Senior Center is listed there. They have their program there by appointment, where you can call up and schedule transportation from where you need to go. And stay informed is, we're going to try to keep that updated as much as possible for any, you know, new or upcoming events. This is a brochure that we developed, and it basically summarizes the areas of the hub. So just to get people thinking, again, mental health crisis lines, list the Beth Israel Leahy mobile crisis, Boston Medical Center. So those are all listed and can be easily accessible to the public. How to prepare yourself for an emergency as well is listed there. And it also gives some data information on how climate change has affected Danvers, on how many hot days over 90 degrees, and frequently have long droughts like we're in right now, and this hot summer we had also. So this is a basic guide, and with this, it can steer people onto the hub that we have established on the, on our website. Our second point is to partner with local health and wellness service providers to promote these, these services. And that we did do. Our intern worked hard to actually contact everyone listed here, just to let them know that we wanted to use their services. And they all said, yes, we will be there for you. So anything listed here is available. So some of them are, obviously, my department, Department of Public Health, is available for anything. And we're also a member of the North Shore Cape and Emergency Preparedness Coalition, where we develop our emergency plan, which is a subpart of the town's emergency response plan. And that's how we set up all our flu clinics, vaccine clinics for COVID, and any type of dispensing site that we may need to have. We also have inspectors, regionally, we have inspectors too, that we can utilize for housing inspections and things like that, as well as food. MEMA is available also when we, I know we had that large event here a few years ago, so between MEMA and Fire Department of Police. I wasn't here, so I just saw it on the news, but that's a type of website we had built. And again, who we partnered up with to give a service to our residents of Danvers. And that's just a list of the housing and shelter providers that we have and reached out to. As you can see, rental assistance, the Section 8 Housing Voucher Program. We have our local nonprofit housing developers as well listed there. One on the bottom there, age span, that's one that I've used a lot for people in need of services in their homes. Food security partners, our people at Food Pantry here, and there was other, Open Door is another big one. There's one in Newburyport as well that provides services. And we just listed the populations that are at risk, so older adults, children and families, people with disabilities, unhoused individuals, low-income individuals with mental illnesses, and pregnant women and caregivers. So those are the populations that we have targeted or trying to service with this, with this hub. I think that's it.
That's it. Any questions, Dee?
I'm not at a moment. Thank you.
Mike?
Not a question, just a statement. A friend reached out looking for help for our older men, male friend.
I can't really, I'm sorry.
A friend reached out for some help, and he, I had him call over to the office at the Senior Center, and they lined him right up perfectly with all the different agencies that could help him, and it was, it was pretty nice. So it does, it does work. So, yeah, so thank you.
What do you have left?
The reason why we did the hub too is, again, well, limited with space, where we're going to put this or start an office like this. But my staff is, between Judith and myself, and our staff that we're going to educate more on this as we move forward. But it's just like you said, it's a one-stop, and again, it just lists any type of service you may need, and it's right there at the fingertips.
Gardner?
I'm just, I, I don't know if you would want to put the Davis Housing Authority on here. The Davis Housing Authority lists them as a.
Dare.
They are there on here, but in a different terminology.
I believe we do have Dare on the, on the website.
No, not Dare. Davis, the Davis, the state program, the Davis Housing Authority. Also, the Davis Housing Authority Trust. I didn't know if you wanted to list them as resources as well.
I believe the Housing Authority is on the website, but I'll check on that.
Okay, very good. I'm, I'm looking at the slideshow. Thank you. Those are my only questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Frank. Very well done. Jamie, appreciate the update. I know a lot of work has gone on this. Happy to see that you have a three-year plan and a 10-year plan. That's good, very good. Thank you. Bill, comment?
Sorry, Mr. Chairman. I thought the police chief.
I just called on Bill, but, Bill? Oh, thank you. Dee?
Well, I, I thought the police, because I had a comment for all three, so.
Jamie is next on the agenda.
Oh, so he's got a separate one?
He's separate, yeah.
So I can make my comment to the fire chief and the.
You can.
Okay, well, apologies. I thought they were all together. Well, I just want to say a thank you to the fire department and to Frank. Obviously, I'm a little biased as a former member of the Board of Health. What, what our local Board of Health does for this town is incredible. Where we go to restaurants, we eat, we don't even think twice about it. There's a lot of work that goes on behind the scene to making sure that we all stay safe. And they touch every aspect of our lives, from air to noise, to food, to road heat, everything. So, and, and Frank and his office does that with, what, three, four people? It's Frank, it's Brianna, now you have Gianna as an intern, and Alicia who keeps you out of trouble, and Judith Ryan. They, they do amazing work. As a matter of fact, my own sister, who is a Danvers resident, got a visit from Judith Ryan after she had her newborn.
Yes, that's one of the programs.
And she had like a postpartum visit, where she came and talked to her about making sure she was okay, making sure she had food. She actually bought her some diapers that were donated. So I just think it's a jewel for our community to be able for them to do what they do with so little. And for the Fire Department, same thing. I do think, when I look at the plan like this, there's a lot of numbers, a lot of big words, but what always comes down to me is, at the end of all these, there's the person. There's someone, there's, there's, there's a family that we are trying to help. And as long as we continue to not lose sight of that, I couldn't be prouder to be in a community that's so proactive. So thank you.
Thank you, appreciate that.
Thank you, Dee. Okay, thank you. Before we go on, just one moment. Folks that came late, we're not doing the town meeting review tonight, just so you know. Thank you, I'm sorry. Bill, you wanted to say something?
Again, Bill Bradstreet, solar power, I thought, was mentioned for storing energy in case of emergency with the Casper Plan. My question is, we're building a solar farm, aren't we, still? Will that be of assistance to the Fire Department in their efforts to have enough power backup?
Jamie?
That's a great question. We're exploring that as well. We work regularly with Electric Light and they're engineers, so that'll be part of the talks, so I'll get back to you on that answer.
Nova Sami Town Meeting Member Precinct one. I'm just curious for anyone, since this hub is just a virtual hub and there's not an office, if someone is not a senior, is there a place that they can go to navigate all of this if they need to? Like, can they go to the library and get help, or the police, like, if this is, it could be overwhelming, I imagine, all of this stuff, and if they aren't a senior, where do they go for help?
Great question. With this being developed and currently on our public health webpage, I do agree, because even with our general applications, renewables, we have people who have difficulty going online. So I think that's a great point, that I will look at how we can make this accessible, let's say, at the Senior Center or at the library, and make sure that, you know, staff at least knows how to navigate and to get the public online. So that's a great point, great point.
I know, Frank, in the resources, a lot of phone numbers for individuals, mental health, urgent care, emergency rooms. And I think I saw the town's phone number somewheres within extension, but certainly, it's on the back, extension 3022, the public health, but that's not manned 24/7.
No.
So that somebody could call and they leave a message?
They'll leave a message with, yeah, that's my extension.
So there is a phone number anyways, but.
You know, we're always gonna be working on updating this, it's not just gonna be a one-time thing, so we'll, again, with suggestions that were made here, it's night, now, you know, we can keep this as a living document and just make sure it's up to date and more accessible to everyone.
Okay, great, thank you very much.
If I may, Mr. Chair?
Yes, please.
One of the parts of the Casper Plan that I've been so impressed with since I've started here is that they, the team meets like quarterly or so, one's coming up in November, and I hope everyone will join us. There's a public summit piece of that event as well. When I have the, remember the date, I'll put it in my report. But the team meets regularly, so they get trained, kind of cross-trained on what the other departments are doing. And so I feel confident that we can work with Frank to make sure if people access, whether it's through the police, through the schools, through the library, through Veteran Services, through the Fire Department. I mean, we, as you know, we touch people in all different ways. So to make sure that everybody cross-trains across department to know that this hub is available for the resources. And if they don't have the answer themselves, they know who and who in town government to call.
Okay, very good. Thank you. Now, with number five, the board will hear a quarterly update from the police chief. Welcome, Chief Lovell.
No pressure.
No pressure. It's only a PowerPoint, not power.
We'll just wait here.
All right, look, here we go.
Danvers Police Department, all right.
Jamie and Frank did this great job in their presentation, so I can let them handle that tonight, and if you have any questions, I can, happy to answer any questions about that plan as well. As far as our presentation tonight, the first slide, please. So off of our current staffing levels, so currently, we have two vacancies. One is due to retirement. The one is created by the FY '26 increase by one officer for the budget season, which we were very appreciative of. Hope to have additional officer, to make three. Officer Jason Skane is retiring in February of 2026, and we're working towards hopefully filling all three positions now, that way when he retires, we already have someone in the pipeline and the academy getting trained. Back on September 9th, we held a candidate orientation meeting for all eligible recruit applicants. That was at the police station, held by Captain Sanborn. During that time, we went over the expectations and the process that the candidates will be going through. Each candidate was assigned a certified background investigator. Each background takes about 40 to 60 hours to complete. Candidates who are recommended to move forward in the process will participate in integrity interviews the week of October 13th. That's about a two-hour interview that is held in front of our command staff, and they discuss integrity questions that we have standardized questions, and also the going of any background questions they have in the background investigations. The top four candidates will be scheduled for meeting the town manager on October 23rd. And our goal is to have all three candidates attend the Lynnfield Police Academy, which begins on January 2nd, 2nd or 5th, maybe the 5th, with expected graduation date of late May, early June. I'm happy to announce we have our final sergeant's promotion, effective Sunday, October 12th. Detective Chris Gaffney will be more to the rank of sergeant. Sergeant Gaffney will be assigned to the day shift as a patrol supervisor and work under the direction of Lieutenant Derek Kellella. This promotion will fill all supervised positions in the departments. The first time in probably four years that we've actually had all of our supervised roles filled, so we're excited about that. As related to this promotion, there'll be an opening in our criminal investigation division, our detectives. So also, October 12th, Nick Kridus will be assigned to the detective division, and Detective Kridus will work under the supervision of Detective Michael Mulk. And the goals are of swearing in at the end of the month for all the promotions from the past few months.
How many detectives will I give you?
Two detectives and one supervisor, so it'll be three in the office.
Thank you.
We continue to post our monthly information infographics on our activity. So that's on our Facebook and our social media accounts through Instagram. About a month or so ago, we also added the weekly dispatch logs, so anyone can go into our website, go to the records division, record portion, and there's a drop-down menu for weekly dispatch logs. It's a PDF that they can select, and they can view all of our calls for service during the week. So again, just trying to get information out there of what we're doing on a daily basis and a regular basis. Some of our crime stats for the, since, from June 14th to September 26th, there've been 87 arrests, 44 summonses, 16 hearings applied for, 11 warrant applications, and seven people placed in protective custody, and that could either be for drugs or alcohol. So far this year, or as of September 26th, we've had 20,236 calls for service. Some of our top locations continue to be Recovery Centers of America with 268 calls for service. Those are medical aids, court order issues, and clients that walk away from the facility. Target is number two with 249 calls for service, 135 of those were shoplifting incidents. It also includes follow-up investigations and 911 calls. Walmart has 138, mostly 911 calls, medical aids, check well-being, and shoplifting. Costco, surprisingly, is 119. A lot of these are minor accidents in the parking lot, 911 calls, a lot of pocket dials in the store, and some medical aids. And then Liberty Mall had 97 calls for service, mostly use disorders, accidents, and medical Some crash data from June 14th to September 26th, we had 340 reported accidents for 815 year-to-date, and we had 105 accident reports submitted in that time period for a total of 256 accident reports submitted. Those, those accident reports are significant damage, personal injury accidents, a lot of the minor, minor accidents, minor property damage in private lots aren't, reports aren't completed on those. Here's a heat map of some action locations. As you can see, Andover at Garden Street is a heavy location. Sylvan Adams, second one, and then there's one up by Maple by Burley Ave. So you can see the red spots is the, is locations with higher incidence of accidents. Traffic enforcement activity from June 14th to September 26th, there were 273 selected enforcements, there were 192 either DDAC patrols or grant enforcement actions, 296 traffic stops, for a total of 761 traffic stops for that time period. Year-to-date, we're up to 2,556 traffic stops in the community. Again, tops violations are speeding with 521, crosswalk violations with 136, and use electric traffic device with 104 citations. Yesterday afternoon, we received an email from the Executive Office of Public Safety stating that the Davis Police Department had been awarded $41,348.70 in National Highway Safety Administration funds. This is for both equipment enforcement and for programming. So traffic enforcement will include distracted driving, speeding, impaired drivers, pedestrian bicycle enforcement will be crosswalk enforcement and bicycle safety equipment. Traffic equipment allows us to purchase a full-mounted radar speed sign and a handheld radar unit. And for community awareness and outreach, it allows us to fund a bike rodeo for the For youth complaints, again, for that same time period, June 14th to the 26th of September, we had 53 youth complaints. Not bad considering it was the summertime months, and we were at 46 during the early spring. Again, locations for complaints, nine is Liberty Tree Mall or Endicott Street, eight were in the downtown area, and eight were on High Street in the area of McDonald's. In the past probably three, four weeks, we've actually impounded five bicycles from individuals in the community. Some community policing initiatives, so between June 14th and again, the September 26th, there were 148 community policing initiatives. Officers conducted directed patrols, engaging and walk-in talks in community policing activities, policing initiatives that are active in the downtown area, and officers addressing concerning behaviors observed among youth. Bicycle safety continues to be a concern for the community and the police department. After the start of the school year, we started to increase in disruptive bicycle activities. I think it was the kids being back in school and then being out around the school or after school. So we collaborated with the principals of elementary school and middle school, as well superintendent, to share some important bike safety. This information was communicated through the principal's weekly emails and including the superintendent's weekly email. Our goal is to encourage parents to actively teach and reinforce bicycle safety with their children, and provided parents with some resources and some key talking points to facilitate discussions about bike safety at home. So on the next slide, you'll see the infographic that we put together for, to go out by the principals. Again, talked about, you know, that this is a shared responsibility, that we need parents to have an active involvement in this, active role in bike safety. We talked about some, did you know about helmets can reduce injuries, you know, that the required is 16 and older, and that bikes can be impounded. Then we also had some talking points about, again, helmet first, ride right, so stay on the right-hand side of the road, be visible while they're riding their bikes, no tricks in traffic, save wheelies and stunts for safe areas, never in the street, look and listen, watch for cars in driveways, intersection and crosswalks, and respect others. So this was sent out to all the parents at the elementary and middle school age and by superintendent's office. October is School Safety Month. We've been working with Superintendent Bowe for the last three, I think, three years now on this topic. So our school resource officers have been conducting their first enhanced lockdown drills at all the elementary, middle, and high schools. They're also leading bus evacuation drills at the elementary school level, and we are in the process of scheduling an annual meetings with the, each school in town, including St. Mary's, St. John's Prep, and Essex Tech. These meetings focus on how we can support the school, teachers, and staff better. These ongoing conversations continue to strengthen our relationships with these schools and our school community. We started doing these, I think, three years ago. We've included the Fire Department now, we meet with the schools, we have coffee, we discuss what's going on, what they're seeing at the beginning of the school year, how the drills went, anything they need from us, and again, how we can support them the best we can. We also made it very important to include St. Mary's, St. John's Prep, and the Tech, because they are in our community, we need them as partners, and they've been very receptive to meeting with us, so it's been actually a great little project we've been doing. Two years ago, we started doing an annual safety presentation. We had it at the Holton Richmond Middle School. I think our first year we had it, we had maybe five people show up, five residents, and then the second year, we had maybe 15 to 20. This year, we tried to take a different approach to it. Even though they were recorded, the presentations were recorded, it was in the auditorium, it was hard to hear, so we decided that we were going to produce our own presentation. So we reached out to Decat and Ms. O'Neil from the Davis High School, and we partnered with them to create a presentation where the high school students actually assist us with all the filming, all the sound, all the editing of the project. Superintendent Bowe has shared the video link with parents and the staff in the community, and it's also available on YouTube under Davis Public Schools Safety Presentation 2025. On the next slide, you'll see, oh, that's the YouTube heading, if you go onto the YouTube Here's some photos from that day. As you can see, we have some gentlemen working the cameras. We had some students also doing all the sound in Sound the Sound Room. They got a couple hours out of school for the day, got to hang out with us a little bit, worked with us on the presentation. Great experience for them to get some active experience doing this. Here's a photo of the group. Ms. O'Neil was very helpful in coordinating all this. From left to right, we have Chris, then we have Milan, Vivian, Sergeant Jeff Smith, Broderick, Antonio, Landon, Shaheer, Ms. O'Neil, and Bedd Thomas from Decat. Bitcoin ATMs, we had a discussion last meeting that we presented at about some success stories with the Bitcoin ATMs. We continue to have issues in the community where people are putting large amounts of money into Bitcoin machines. We had one about two weeks ago where the store actually called us, our detectives responded, and we were able to stop the individual from putting the money in. The person on the other side of the phone was telling the person to not listen to the police, go outside, don't let it hit what we're talking about, do what I'm telling you to do. Luckily, we were able to stop that. So we are seeing additional scams. Some recent court rulings have not been so favorable for law enforcement as far as recovering the funds, so that's a concern. So some communities have begun implementing bylaws to prohibit virtual currency kiosks within the community. So one of the projects right now I'm working on with the town manager is to work with her and legal counsel to draft up a town bylaw that would prohibit these Bitcoin ATMs in the community. Right now, we have two active ones, one maybe come back online, I think the business is moving, so they might come back online at some point. So that's a photo of the Gloucester bylaw. So we'll use that information, work with our legal counsel, hopefully to draft up a town bylaw and present to the board for, hopefully, their support. Commissioner on Law Force Accreditation, Kalia, November 11th. Uh, Commissioner on Law Force Accreditation in Kalia, uh, November eleventh, Captain Samborn, Lieutenant Sullivan and I will be traveling to Jacksonville, Florida to attend the Fall Conference. On Friday, November fourteenth, uh, will be, uh, before the review board in Committee B chaired by Kalia Commissioner Sheriff John Simon Negro of the Shelby County Alabama Sheriff's Office. Um, during the session, the review of our final assessment report, which summarizes our four year accreditation cycle and asks questions about our department. Um, a final vote from the commission is scheduled for Saturday morning and we anticipate it being our twelfth accreditation award that evening at the annual award dinner. Coming soon, hopefully what up and running within the next week or two. Um, we've worked with I T to create an encrypted form so that data can be submitted safely to our website. Um, it's called the Safe Watch Program. And this is initiative where we can proactively gather pertinent information on at risk individuals. This information will assist offices in conducting a well informed search, deploying resources effectively if a person goes missing. Uh, the program's designed for individuals with autism spec- on with autism spectrum disorder, dementia, Alzheimer's, Down Syndrome, acquired or traumatic brain injuries and other conditions. So what this does, it's a form that they can fill on out online that will be sent to us and we can input this into our, our system, our recruitment system, including photos. Descriptions, contact information, um, notes on how to best approach people if we come in contact with them. Um, so this will be a, um, great program for a lot of people in the community that have, um, loved ones who suffer from these illnesses or, uh, conditions. Hopefully, again, by the end of the week, early next week, we'll have this up and running and we'll put this out on social media to inform the public that it is available. Uh, some come upcoming events, um, October ninth, I'll be joining Superintendent Bauer at the Holton Richmond Middle School for a community coffee to discuss school safety. Um, since we weren't in person, in person for the presentation, uh, Superintendent Bauer has scheduled two coffees where, uh, parents can come down and speak to us about any concerns they might have. Um, on October eleventh, from eight to noon, uh, we'll host a food drive at the DMS, uh, Topper Shop up at the DMS Plaza. This is part of the National Faith in Blue Weekend. Um, October twenty third, from four to six P M, we'll hold our annual, uh, thirty annual pumpkin painting with the police event. So we allow, uh, community to come down to police station. We have tables set up, we have free pumpkins and then come down and paint pumpkins with us. We have music, we have some snacks and, uh, it's a nice little evening. And then on November fifteenth, we'll have a second food drive up at Market Basket. And again, this is to assist the people to people food pantry in anticipation of Thanksgiving week. And December sixth, we'll have our annual food, uh, toy drive at, uh, Target, which supports our Christmas program for DMS families. I think that's all I have.
Thank you, very good, very detailed. Uh, Jamie, are there regulations regarding two on a bike?
Um, I think unless it's, it's designed for two people, it should not be happening.
No, a, a single bike, one seat, two people sitting on the handlebars, sitting behind, whatever.
Not safe operation, no.
No, but is there any regulations?
Um, I'd have to double check, but I would assume there's something about safety reasons for that, yes.
And I see a, a number of kids two on a bike. And it's, it's dangerous, it's a safety issue for both for kids.
Correct.
Is that something we can?
Yep, we can look into that.
Enforce?
Um, we've been trying to adjust any type of risky behavior in general, so yeah, we can put out the offices and have them, um, have some conversations with the individuals.
Okay, thank you. Uh, and happy to hear that you're going to come up with a bylaw to eliminate the Bitcoin machines, thank you. Mike, any questions for the chief?
Uh, yeah, I was trying to look that law up that you just asked about. I have a copy of the, uh, bylaws.
You want a minute?
No, 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 we can get it figured out. Um, chief, is there any? Do you need, uh, us or, or the traffic board to help you? Is there any bylaws that you need that would help with the bicycle situation? And in, has it calmed down for the time being that the kids riding down the middle of the street and stuff?
It got better, but then when the school year started, it got, it's picking up a little bit. Um, that's why, as you saw, we had, I think, five bikes seized in a matter of, I think, three or four days. Um, and again, it's difficult, um, you know, when we try to engage some of these kids, they take off on us. Obviously, we can't chase them because that's really safe either. Um, luckily, the officers did some, um, digging and they were able to identify these kids and take action. So, uh, you know, it's, it's getting better, I think. It's not perfect by any means, but it's getting better. Um, you know, I think the fact the officers are taking the bites, that we're having more meaningful conversations with the parents. Um, having parents come down, pick up their children, it's no longer just, hey, get out of here and no one knows about it. Uh, parents are being contacted on a higher level now and I think there's most more accountability on the kids from the parents, I hope.
Is there any citations issued when the bikes are taken?
Um, it depends. It's not citations because they're age, but we'll seize the bikes. Um, I know there's an incident the other day where we had a teen on a motorized bicycle who required a helmet. Uh, he didn't have one. Our officers parked the bike, we took the bike to the station, they drove to his house to get his helmet and then brought him back to the station to get his bike and then spoke to the parents. So we're trying to do as much as we can to educate them and, um, get them to the right thing.
What kind of, um, um, feedback are you getting from the parents?
Typically, good, good feedback, most of them, pretty good feedback so far.
Are we getting a traffic car?
Someday. Um, I'd love to see it. Right now, our staffing levels doesn't really allow for a dedicated traffic car. Uh, for many, many years, we had a car that said traffic on it, but it wasn't really a dedicated traffic car. Um, at some point, I'd love to see a traffic car. That'll be part of our discussion when we do our staffing study is, you know, what it would take to staff that view, that, that position and how we can get to that position.
Yeah, I think that'd be a big help again, you know, get somebody out there. The more blue lights, the more crime goes away, right? And that would amp up our traffic stops too.
Yes.
Just, you know, more, more insight with people seeing that. Uh, the Bitcoin machines, are you able to tell us where those are located so people wouldn't, uh?
Um, there's, I think they're up on Route One at the gas stations up on Route One, uh, at, at the North Street. And I give them credit, like, they did call us the other day when they saw someone, so I think they're understanding as well and they're trying to be a little more proactive as well by calling us and saying, hey, this isn't looking right, can you come down and talk to them, which we truly appreciate. So, um, that has been better, but again, I, this, I don't really see many legitimate purposes for these machines, so, uh, a bylaw could be very helpful.
Is, um, on a different one, is, is there still active shooter training going on, like with the school buildings and public buildings and whatnot?
Yep, we do, we said we have firearms this week, so we're doing some, um, low level firearm training with some of those activities. Um, we are looking at trying to do like a regional training, um, under some new protocols. Uh, Sergeant Balasari is scheduled as a trained as a instructor. Uh, we learned, um, on yesterday, Monday, that Swamp Skid is hosting a class by the, held by the FBI. And they've offered us a few spots, so we're going to try to get two more offices into that training, so we'll have three certified offices to teach the most recent, um, training, um, curriculum to our offices.
And is, is the protocol still the first officer heads right in?
Yep, absolutely.
Okay, I don't know if that, like CPR changes every ten minutes, you know?
Nope, that's still the same, you know, back in column nine, it was, you know, wait, gather team, get the SWAT team there first. Now it's as soon as it comes in, you go, you go in, first car, first car there goes in.
Okay, good. All right, thank you.
Thank you. Gardner?
Thank you, chief. Um, I actually have a question, which may or may not be for both chiefs, or deputy chief. Can someone refresh my memory, do we have a bylaw that, uh, related to the number of incidences or alarms at a specific business? Um, and could I get a reminder of that? Because I live near a facility that has a very high call volume. Uh, I live up near the RCA and they have patients who on a regular basis crash through the door and set off the alarms and have responses. Do we, what do we do when we have a business, either through a, uh, police enforcement or a fire, uh, professional?
There is a town bylaw for alarm billing, for alarm, as far as like nuisance alarms. Um, unfortunately, right now, our, our MS system is a few versions behind and we need to update that system, which we're in the process of doing with I T. And once that's back up and running, we can hopefully get back into some alarm billing for false alarms. Um, I think the ones at RCA, are they coming in as, are they internal alarms or the actual?
And I don't mean to pick on them, they were, they were just a opportunity to discuss the subject.
Of course, no, there is a bylaw, uh, we do have the ability to find people for re- reoccurring false alarms. We have a couple times in the past, but we try to use it as a last resort.
Sure.
Uh, most people take care of their businesses, take care of their systems. Um, we typically use it as a tool when people are resistant to make the fixes and repairs that they need to. Um, but anything that is a reoccurring problem with crews that respond, even if it's a couple shifts in a row, they notify us and our fire prevention division. Um, us or them follow up on it and if it's a, if it is a behavioral thing, we'll educate, um, but we do have that ability if we need to.
Okay, thank you. Uh, for chief, um, a couple of questions, and again, these are just stream of consciousness through your. I appreciate the quarter to quarter analysis, this many from March to June, June to, but I'm a data guy.
Yep.
And I would want to see trends. There's variables in those quarters, the good weather, whether the school's in session, things of that nature. In the next time we have this presentation, could you offer the year to date from the previous year for this, whatever the same quarters are? It just helps us understand, and it doesn't tell a false story, but if all of a sudden something doubled, that would be a good discussion point. Sometimes the doubling is crime has increased. Sometimes doubling is enforcement and, and observation has increased.
Right.
Um, they, you know, you can't, you can't just infer, but it would be nice to know if you had this many traffic stops in these first two quarters of last year and you had them again this year.
Sure.
Just be helpful. I know that the town has a very robust statistician, person who takes care of this, especially around, circling around traffic. Are those, is that information, traffic studies, uh, accident studies, things of that nature, you pointed out some hotspots. Online and available for people, because often we hear anecdotal conversations. If there's two or three accidents in a location in a small time period, people tend to overestimate the numbers of accidents at that, uh, location. And it would be nice to be able to say, you know, that, yes, it appears because you've had three, but the reality is it's not. Or, and I don't do know that the state measures and quantifies.
Yep.
The dangerousness level of, and I'm probably not using our terminology, of a, is that stuff available online?
Uh, Mast D O T does host a lot of information online, we can search community and stuff like that and find locations of accidents. You know, something we could put on our website, we can try to do some more, um, maps on our website as far as some of the traffic data that we had there. That's pretty easy to do, it's a lot of software now developed that for us, we don't need to make that map ourselves. Um, so we could look at posting some more information on accident locations and.
And I'm not trying to add workload, I'm thinking that if the data is available and someone has, you know, whether you get an intern who might be able to help on some of this stuff or whatever, it might be good to have self-service. Because I do point people to the, to the statisticians, say, when they say, oh, we've got a, you know, all these, all these accidents at this location.
Right.
Isn't, I want to know the reality, not the anecdotal observation.
Okay.
Thanks. Um, I like the Safe Watch stuff. When you talked about the Safe Watch Program, is that for local residents? Is it a, is it, or is it more statewide?
It would be for local residents.
Okay.
Um, other communities have started doing this program as well, we kind of copied some of our stuff from, I think it was Melrose or Malden. Um, so we're kind of copying some of their information. And, um, again, it's just to give us more information in our, in our system. You know, the more information we have, the more updated photos we have, the better. Um, so we're just trying to get this.
Absolutely, I, I'm encouraging, I, I wish it was actually broader in this, as much as, like Maryland has the, uh, blue butterfly, has the butterfly for hidden disabilities on licenses. It includes law enforcement, uh, when that's initial, or the Blue Envelope Program.
Yep.
And it just seems, and I appreciate that we're going at it at a local level. I'm, my, I would like to see it broadened so it's statewide, so if someone was pulled over, if a local resident was pulled over and saw us.
Right.
They would have access to the same important information, but supportive of it. And finally, is there a, um, uh, a category for the, um, for electronic fraud, for like skimmers? We off, again, anecdotally, someone has been saying that a particular site in Davis has had a lot of problems with gas pump skinner, skimmers, taking your credit card information. To what extent can the local police participate in enforcement? Is there enforcement, is there, you know?
Um.
Can you do?
I'm not aware of a lot of incidents that have been reported to us. I'm not saying has been said on social media.
Anecdotally, yeah, right.
But, you know, if, if a skimmer was found, we're going to work with the gas station or the store.
Mm-hmm.
Through video surveillance and so you can identify who placed it there. We have a pretty robust email system called Crime Net where we can send out photos of a suspect and it goes to hundreds of thousands of police officers across Massachusetts and New England. Um, so if we get a report of something, we identify a skimmer, we're going to work with the financial institution, the company and our partners to identify who put it there and go forward with it.
And I agree, social media is a double edged sword.
Yep.
So, but thank you very much, those are my questions.
Thank you, Gardner, Pete.
Yeah. Thank you, chief, for the update, a lot of, um, enforcement there. I, and I, I like the fact that although there was a lot of enforcement, there's also a lot of focus on prevention. Um, I always look at a police department the same as a public health, which is prevent, promote, um, and protect. And, and I think the department does a very good job of that.
Thank you.
Um, full disclosure, um, on the advisory board for RCA. Um, I, I do think that if there's issues there, the, the administration is really committed to working with the town and the department. And, and I'm, I'm pretty optimistic that they will work as hard as they can to address, um, those alarms issues. So if, if there's, I knew there were issues, I didn't know how bad they were.
And please, that wasn't a knock on RCA, I consider them a very good neighbor. I literally can see the, I can see the Hunt emergency room from my house. So I, I'm right there and every alarm I hear, I'm, they were used as an example, not as a, not as complaint.
Okay, okay, yeah, no, I, I do think that, uh, if there's ever anything, the administration will really be willing to work with the department and the town to address it. Bitcoin machines or ATM.
Yes.
The bylaw that we're talking about and, and just so I understand, do we, does the town get any revenue from those? Not that it should matter, but they do not.
No.
How, how beneficial is it for a business to have one of those?
I, I've heard rumors, and again, these are tricky rumors, that, you know, they might get a small nominal fee for having it there, but it's not a huge impact, I don't believe.
Okay, for the towns that have implemented the bylaw, do we know how the businesses reacted or? Like, are we, are we trying to take some of their revenue away? In which case can we work with them? It, it sounds like there was a really good business there that did something to prevent something bad from happening. Because i- it doesn't only happen with the Bitcoin, I think it could happen with any ATM, uh, where there could be fraud. So do we want to just think of having a bylaw to suppress it altogether? Or to see if it's beneficial to the business? How do we work with the businesses to make sure that the fraud?
That's something we can do when we, when we do our research on the bylaw and we present to you on that bylaw. Uh, we can do some research and speak to some of the owners and find out like, okay, how's this going to impact your business? Is this really, you know, that, does it help you, does it hurt you? And we can get that information and make that part of our presentation.
Yeah, I think that would be helpful to see that at least benefits and not just take, uh, the business away from the businesses. And you may or may not know, for the kids on the bike, do you notice, are there repeated offenders?
There are some.
And do we latch it up the?
Yes, we do.
The talk with the family or the kids or do we?
Yes, we do.
Impound the bike for a longer period of time or?
Yes, sometimes the bike is taken and come down to a parent and you can retrieve your bike, other times it's being held for up to fifteen days. So there is, you know, some, um, options, the officers to use, some judgment the officers to use on how long they want to hold it for and how they want to follow through with things.
Perfect, thank you. Uh, the Safe Watch Program, is it the same, I remember when my kids were little, uh, they had their picture taken by the police. And you had something where you could have some of the kids' pictures.
Yeah, this is a little bit different, this would be more a little more modernized, so it would be a, a form they fill online. Um, and we'd take that information and we'd create it either, we call it a mastercard. So anyone would be coming in contact with, whether it's a traffic stop, an accident, a victim, a, a mastercard is created, it's their name, their demographics, you know, where they live, contact information. So this would just, um, allow us to fill more of those blocks in in those mastercards. So this would just allow us to fill more of those blocks in in those MasterCards, including photos, contacts, information, anything that maybe cues that would be helpful for us to either, you know, how to approach them, or don't approach them this way. So it's more just notes that we can have. And then if we run someone's name through, you put James Lovell in there, it would pop up on the top with either like an announcement saying Safe Watch program. Then we know to dig deeper into those, that report to see what information is in there.
Okay, okay. And on the, on the numbers, there was something about, I think it was a hundred and four stop for use of electronic device.
Yes, yes.
Is that people using their cellphone?
Cellphone, texting while driving, watching Netflix while driving, stuff like that.
So I, I was under the impression that someone couldn't be stopped for that. They had to be stopped for something else, and?
No, that's, it's a primary offense.
Oh, okay.
Yes, no more. No more.
No more Netflix.
Did the law change on that, or has it always?
Pretty sure it was always the same. I'll double check, but I was pretty sure it was always that way.
Because I thought you could be stopped for something else, and then?
Seatbelt.
Seatbelt used to be that way. Seatbelt was a secondary.
That's not for him.
Seatbelt, if they're under a certain age, it was a primary violation, but over, like 15 or something like that, but over a certain age, it was a secondary. So if you were stopped for speeding, you didn't have a seatbelt on, you had the option to say, I'll give you a break on the speeding, hit you the seatbelt, but it was, that was a secondary enforcement.
Okay, perfect. Thank you. And the last thing, one of the things that, and I don't know if this is a data that could be available in the future, like on all those, and I don't know if this is necessary, but all the stops, if they are Danvers resident or just people driving through town? I'd be curious just to know. I think we in Danvers are pretty good.
That knows I'm control, my number one stop was probably a minivan with a mom driving the kids to school, or, so yeah, it's, it's 50/50. We probably could pull that data down as far as resident versus non-resident, you know, being a busy community with Route 1, 114, 95, 128, the malls, all the shopping plazas, hotels, motels. We do have a lot of transient population. You could probably figure that out if you really want to know.
Thanks for arguing. Thank you.
Yep.
Okay, all set? Very good. Thank you, Chief. Appreciate it. See you when, when's the next time?
It's the last time, right? Am I done?
We're still done.
By one year? We'll discuss.
It'll be next, next year, 2025.
You have to say the first of next year. Thank you. Members, number seven, the board will continue discussion of recommendations by the Town Meeting Manager Act Review Committee. Can I have a motion to table?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Mr. Chairman, I was going to bring this as, I'm sorry. I'll wait for a second.
Second.
Mr. Chairman, I was going to bring up the subject on the new business, but if you think it's more appropriate now. I had sent an email to the board, understanding that the board can't all answer because it's an open meeting violation. I expressed a concern or a question I had. Do you want to take that concern or question now, or later?
About the town meeting review?
No. Are we on town meeting review, or town manager?
Town meeting.
Oh, town meeting review. I'm sorry. I apologize. You're ahead of me.
No, you're, you're ahead of us.
Yeah, I'm ahead of you.
Can we have a motion? We have a motion in a second.
Yeah, motion to table at town manager.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. The board will consider commendations for organize, organizers of the President's Cup International Tai Kwon Do Event in Danvers, Mass., the first ever in the U.S. Somebody here to speak to this? Is that you?
I think through you, Mr. Chair, I think the clerk has the commendations.
Okay.
And the, the verbiage was provided by a member, Dejoko, so if he wants to speak to it, you ha, I think you have them, right?
I do. I have a, for the board to sign off.
Yeah, so if you want to read one?
This is not, and I'll pack it.
Okay. I, I'm happy to read it. Dave, you want to read it?
Oh, no.
Do you want to read it?
No, go for it.
Okay. The members of the Danvers Select Board are pleased to commend and recognize King Duck Mo of the Department of Sports Industry and Professor at Sing Jang University as an organizer of the 2025 Sing Jang University President's Cup Tai Kwon Do Championship for his outstanding efforts in helping organize and bring this international event to our community. This first-ever U.S. edition of the President's Cup is scheduled to take place in Danvers, Mass. on October 11, 2025, and represents a significant achievement in global sports, diplomacy, and cultural exchange. Through his dedication, he has not only promoted the physical and emotional benefits of Tai Kwon Do, including improved fitness, flexibility, balance, self-confidence, and self-defense, but also has created meaningful opportunities for international cooperation and goodwill. This championship contributes meaningfully to the worldwide spread of growth of Tai Kwon Do. Moreover, by fostering network among Tai Kwon Do practitioners across the Americas, this event enriches our town with the spirit of unity and shared passion. On behalf of the citizens of Danvers, we extend our sincere appreciation and warmest congratulations to King Duck Mo for his vision, leadership, and dedication in making this historic event a reality.
Dee, is that your motion?
Uh, yes, I move that we send them in, thank you, letter of commendation.
I believe that, right, I think you have two, five. There's five different people, so.
The five organizers of the competition.
Right, to the five organizers.
Well, that's a motion. Is there a second?
Second motion.
And Dee, do you want to speak to the motion?
Well, as I said during our last meeting, it's the first time that we have in the St. John University International President's Cup Tai Kwon Do Competition in the United States. And, and that's happening in Danvers, led by Master Hong, who is right on Maple Street, right next to, is it Rebel Coffee and Cav Mandu?
Yep.
Like next door there, yes. And I just thought it was, it's good for our town to be the first one to host in the U.S., and it's good for the youth, the adult. And I would ask that the board support it.
Comments?
The event is going to be on the 11th, and we are all invited to attend if you can.
The 11th?
It's going to be October.
What time and where?
11:30 at the Danvers Indoor Sports. The, the opening event is at 11:30. I know the chairwoman have said she will be in attendance, as well as the town manager and our state rep, Sally Kearns, as well. Joan Lovely might be, and, and maybe the lieutenant governor. That has not been confirmed yet.
Okay. We have a motion in a second. Any comments, Gardener?
No comments.
Michael?
Uh, no, no comments.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed, none. Thank you, Dee. Very good.
Thank you.
Sounds interesting. October 11th at 11:30. The manager will report to the board on various items of interest. Jill?
Um, thank you. I want to start by, Anna's worked very hard on these commendations and doesn't want them wrinkled, so please be careful in your handling of them. We have strict instructions. Also, as a random aside, assistant town manager and I were walking to get lunch when the police approached the youth on the electric bike with no helmet, and it was good to see our team in action. They knew, and it was really, and heartwarming to see that they interacted with the kid in a positive way, and it had a positive outcome. Other things for you to know, Stephen King, town engineer, worked with Sharon Clement, and we recently submitted a grant application to the EPA for regional water interconnections and resiliency. This was something that was discussed at the Regional Task Force. They did not take action at that time to pursue it, so we, as Danvers, took the lead in a be looking at our interconnections with our surrounding communities and building in resiliency, and making sure that we will be able to use those interconnections if necessary in an emergency. So some recent meetings and events that I attended, the Minnesota Light Board meeting last week, and the Public Power Open House, which is a great event. I want to thank the Electric Division for putting that on, the entire team, linemen, from lineman to the utility director are all part of the event, and it was great to see the community come out and support the Electric Department. I was also at the Water and Sewer Commission meeting. I had a meeting with the Board of the, the Chair of the Board of Health, Dr. McLaughlin, the Chair of HRIC, Johann Hunter. So I'm working my way now that summer is over through making sure I connect with all of our boards, committees, and commissions. I want to thank the principal at the Danvers High School and the superintendent for the Unified Sports Basketball Game. If, I know some of us were there. I know the chairwoman was there, and so was Rep. Sally Kearns. It was an incredible event. The, all of the other teams, the fall teams, were there to support them, the cheerleaders, the marching band, and I heard on school committee last night, they think there are about 800 people in attendance for the Unified Basketball Game. It was, it was incredible. And the celebracion on Saturday night, thank you to the HRIC for organizing. I was able to attend. I did miss the salsa dancing, which is apparently the highlight, so I know next year to get there a bit earlier. Events that are coming up that are important, flu clinic at the Senior Center on Thursday, October 16th, from 9 to noon. Pre-registration is strongly encouraged, but not required. You heard about the pumpkin painting with the Police Department on October 23rd. And we are excited to celebrate America Recycles Week with a, America Recycles Day with a Zero Waste Recycling Weekend, Saturday, October 25th, and Sunday, October 26th, from 9 to 1 at the Danvers High School in the parking lot. More information on what, what and how you can recycle things at that event, but it does include electronics. There is a fee, so, for some of the electronics. So we have some partners in that event, so if you have some things kicking around, it's a great time to dispose of them properly. As a reminder to the board, any questions or changes to the traffic rules and orders as presented by Aaron Henry two meetings ago? Please get those to Aaron and myself as soon as possible. We are expecting the public hearing to be October 21st. With the kind of change in our schedule after tonight, we will see. It's part of the reason my report's late tonight, is I thought we were going to have a much busier agenda. And as a reminder, town offices will be closed on this Monday, the 13th. An acknowledgement of Indigenous Peoples' Day and Columbus Day, and trash and recycling will be delayed for one day next week as a result.
Any questions for the town manager? Okay, thank you, Jill. Number 10, the board will discuss town manager goals for the remainder of fiscal year 2026. A motion to table, please.
So moved.
Is there a second?
A second. And then the question about whether we do it now?
We have a motion as a second, as a discussion?
Yes.
Yes?
Yes. I have a discussion on this.
Go ahead.
And that is, this is a deviation from the way we had previously been doing the town manager's goals, as, obviously nothing to do with the town manager herself. In the past, we had all thrown on the table both goals we thought were what would happen. This year, it went to a subcommittee to kind of cull that list down. And I'm, I guess I'm wondering when that subcommittee was formed. It wasn't discussed when we talked about subcommittees in the, in, at the beginning of the year. And I'm concerned that three of us not participating, because of the majority of a subcommittee, may not, may all agree on a certain goal or task that didn't make the cut. I'm just wondering, and I'm assuming last year, when I was not on the board, that there was a deviation because Rodney was the acting town manager, and, but when did this become a subcommittee? And we deviate from that past practice? I thought that past practice was more democratic.
As I recall, and I could be wrong, and we may have to refer to the minutes of a particular meeting, it was discussed in public of the chair appointed a subcommittee, myself and selector Dean.
Mm-hmm.
And each member was asked to send in their thoughts, their goals for consideration. And in the two meetings that we had with the town manager, all those input from all five members was considered and attached to the various goals that the town manager discussed, and we narrowed it down to a document for review, which is going to be tonight, but will be at the next meeting. But it was done in public. Each member had a chance to put in their recommendations for goals.
Oh, and I did.
Yeah.
It just, it was a deviation from past practice, and?
Okay.
And, and so when I see, get to see that list, I may bring up some of my other, other comments, but understanding that, yes, the town manager should also participate in.
We worked with her to help set goals, especially being this given her first year. And we weren't looking for easy goals that check off as in the past, and that's all.
Some of them are hard. Some of them is about water, you know, things of that nature. So, all right, I just, I was, I was caught short in understanding that this was a new subcommittee, and that was a deviation from past practice. But thank you. Thank you.
The board will consider consent calendar items, please.
Mr. Chair, I don't think we've voted to table.
Oh, thank you. We got, we did. We had a motion and a second and comment. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed, none. Thank you, Dee. The board will consider the consent calendar.
So moved.
Is there a second?
A second.
Okay. Make note, make note that on the select board minutes or notes, which is not part of the consent calendar, we have a change of date for the November 18th meeting to the 17th. I just want to point that out to the public. All in favor of the consent calendar?
Aye.
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 Thank you. Correspondence, new business, previous business update, select board closing comments. Mike?
Um, just a comment. I believe the select board, I'm sorry, the school board voted last night to let parents opt out of a book that's controversial in the junior high. Does that sound correct?
It was not a vote.
What's that?
It was not a vote.
It was not a vote. But were they in support of giving parents the chance to opt out?
I don't feel comfortable speaking on behalf of the superintendent.
Yeah, okay. All right. I was just supporting that if they were behind giving the parents that choice, I was in support of that. That's all. Thank you.
Reach out to Dan, so he can walk you through it.
All right.
That's it?
That's it.
Okay, Dee?
Thank you. No, no comment, and, I mean, since Mike brought it up, it's not under the preview of the select board, but as a parent within the school, I did watch part of the meeting. I did not watch the whole thing. I don't think there was a vote per se, but I also do believe that parents always have the option. I, I don't think there's ever, at this, I, I've, I've never felt that I didn't have the option to, I mean, I choose to send my kids to school. If I say stay home, they will stay home. So I, I think they, they always have that option. Not based on the vote, but as, as a parent, I think they do. Thank you.
All set?
All set.
Thank you. Gardener?
No, 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 no new correspondence or new information. Thank you.
Thank you. I did get a correspondence regarding our favorite airport. Thank you. I did get a correspondence regarding our favorite airport. And I'd take the liberty to read from my phone if it's acceptable. So the email said, "N264CE," I don't know what that is, "went in and out of the Beverly Airport five times. It is back for the night and leaving at 7:10 a.m. Tuesday for Iceland." "The same plane just took off from Beverly for the third time today with no destination. Registered to Fly Invest Inc. trustee." So I guess the complaint is, there's a jet in and out of the Beverly Airport five times in one day. It said here that it left for an hour and came back with no destination. Can we reach out to the folks at the Airport Commissioner? See if we can get some updated clarification on that?
Yeah, they were actually supposed to be here, I think it was, it was one, one month. But so they're rescheduling right now, so we can share that.
Add that to them, let them know that there's a complaint about...
I know Mr. Betancourt is waiting for that date, so Anna's working on that scheduling, so.
Okay, thank you.
They will be on a, a meeting this morning.
That was the correspondence that I received regarding that. Thank you. I have no updates other than that. Look forward to getting started on the town meeting and town manager review. It's like we take two steps forwards and three backwards. But anyways, I look forward to getting to work on that. And with that, if the other important comments from the board, if you see a veteran, please say thank you for their service, his or her. And good night, Danvers.